Because they're just advisory.
Good morning, everyone. The backroom was able to be even more efficient. I thought it would take a couple of minutes, so. Welcome this morning. October 1st. It is so hard to believe. Yesterday, we had summer. Today, we have a titch of fall before it's going to get nice again. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We want the record to reflect that we have four of our commissioners here in person. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I thought he was going to be here in person and was unable to. Because we were not able to notice where he is, he could participate today, but he will not be able to vote. So just so all members are aware of that. But we're really glad you're able to be with us remotely, Lee. Please join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. So are we, we, sorry, excuse me, because we're doing presentations and awards. I almost skipped approving the agenda. I know we have a couple of modifications. Dr. Williams?
Madam Chair, yes, we do. There's three items on the consent agenda, nine, 10, and 11, F9, 10, and 11, that are came from the Planning Commission, and those were tie votes, two-to-two tie votes, which really means that that decision comes to you. So those should certainly be moved on to the regular agenda for your discussion and action. And we do have Environmental Services here. We could put them on that part of the agenda, I would suggest.
That makes sense. Is there any other changes or additions?
No.
Okay. Seeing no other changes, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Madam Chair, with the changes?
Thank you, Commissioner Natch. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right. Our agenda is approved. For the backroom, if you're able to put Commissioner Lenzmeyer back on the screen for us, that would be great. That way, we'll make sure, in case he's got anything he wants to make sure to say. All right, our first item is the virtual presentation of employee years of service recognition. I know that we will be switching our, our screen to that. Just want to take a moment to thank all of our employees on behalf of the board. It is an honor and a privilege to get to serve with you. The difference that you make is, it's just manifold. You are able to leverage the work that you do, working with, whether it's people, their families, their businesses, their properties, helping really make a difference. It is not always glamorous work. Sometimes it's really tough work, and we know that you put your, your best into it. And sometimes, because of a presentation we had recently, or for example, if you work at Human Services, you may not have software that works the way it needs to, and it can make it even more difficult. Or maybe we have a horrible winter, and you've got to plow more, or coming and dealing with the many requests through the Licensing Center. We just are, the work we do is multifaceted, and you are the ones that make it happen. So today, we're getting to celebrate all of you. Everybody who is celebrating, every five years will have gotten a certificate, but we're going to see some of the people who have served 10 to 35 years, and it really does say something about the county, the way, the place that it is to work, and our values, that so many people choose to stay and work as, as, as long as they do. I didn't mention, I'm sorry, we're going to go to this pretty quickly. I didn't mention a couple other of the groups that are in here. Sheriff Soika and Deputy Sheriff Dan Miller on here, as well as Becky Males-Cramley from Corrections, thinking about our public safety, since that's one of the big pieces that we're working on right now. Working to make sure that our citizens get a chance to pay less, a lot less, for an important project coming up, thinking about our HR folks, Environmental Services. I'm going to forget some of the departments, County Attorney's Office. It is pretty amazing. With that, why don't we go ahead and start the program? Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning, everybody. As you suggest, Stearns County is full of dedicated, hard-working employees who every day are living out our values of professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable, as they provide all of those variety of services to the people of the county. We're recognizing 60 employees today with, as you said, anniversaries from January of this year to June of this year. And combined, these employees have 1,115 years of service to the people of the county. So we're going to take a couple of minutes and watch the recognition program. All right. Once again, thanks to those 60 employees and all our employees who exemplify our mission to provide exceptional public services for a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. We recognize the dedication and the important work that all of you do for the good of the people of the county, and that's what we're here for, is hopefully to make people's lives better. So on, on behalf of myself and the county board, we appreciate you and the work you do in serving the residents of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, members, we're moving on to our consent agenda. We've removed items nine through 11. Is there any other items people would like to talk about? Have pulled, or looking for a motion to approve the rest of the?
I'll move the consent agenda, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bertram.
I'll second with those items.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, the motion is approved. We'll move on to Public Works. Good morning, Ms. Teich.
Good morning. My first item is G1. It's found on page 434 of your agenda packets. I'm asking the board to adopt a resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings related to CP 073-157-021. And that project is the County Road 157 reconstruction between Albany and Freeport. One thing I do want to note is I handed out before the board meeting, a revised resolution. As you're aware, whenever we decide to move forward with eminent domain proceedings, we continue to negotiate in good faith with all of the property owners. The revised resolution only includes Parcel 28B, Dorothy Durkis. In this case, the property owner is deceased, and we are working through the courts to get access to that property that we need for our project. So I'm asking the board to adopt that resolution so we can begin the court proceedings for the project, keep it on track for a late-fall bid opening, and we can do the tree removal and the old Trestle Bridge removal this winter then, with the road reconstruction taking place in 2025.
I'll move the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Natch. Is there a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram. Are there any questions or comments on this item?
Just, Madam Chair, obviously, the other one was resolved. It was two originally. I think I heard you say that, but thank you.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right. That is approved. Thank you. Is there anything else you want to let us know?
I have nothing else. The next item, under Environmental Services, there is a public hearing. I didn't know if you wanted to do those consent agenda items first, or do the public hearing first, as I'll be presenting with that.
You will be presenting. Ms. Benson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I think it's best if we do the public hearing first, and then we'll add the, do those other items.
Since you're already up here, let's go ahead and do that, and then members will move to the other items. All right. So we will move on to the public hearing, considering the amendments to Stearns County land use and zoning ordinance number 439. Ms. Teich?
Thank you. Although this is under Environmental Services because it is a land use and zoning ordinance item, this is related to Highway Department issues. As the board may recall, in April, I brought to you an agreement with a utility company that was located just outside of our 33-foot right-of-way. The cost for relocating those lines was large and caused us to push back some other road projects so that we could pay for that in order to keep our County Road 2 project on schedule. There are several counties in the state that have similar ordinances to what I have proposed here, varying levels of the distances from center line, varying levels of how hard and fast that ordinance is, whether it be a mandatory minimum distance, or a anything within 200 feet of the roadway center line has to meet with the approval of the county engineer. So at the time of that discussion on that agreement that we had related to our County Road 2 project, I mentioned these options to the county board, and they thought, the county board thought that I should move forward with investigating an ordinance update. Now, that being said, there's background information starting on page 437 of your packets. We did receive four letters that are included in your agenda packets, pages 440 through 449. I also believe that some of those people are here to speak to the ordinance today, but before we open the public hearing for comment, I do want to say that I'm going to recommend that the board continue the public hearing to a later date. Again, I, I believe we should open it since they're here to speak. But Commissioner Natch and I met with a couple of the utility companies last Friday and believe that this language could be adjusted to have a better overall final product for all involved, including the Highway Department. Stearns County provide us some protections while not making things much more difficult for those utility companies.
So, Ms. Teich, I believe what I'm hearing you suggest is that there is going to, even after we hear from some of the people today, that you'd like an opportunity to go back and make some adjustments before we actually close the hearing and vote on.
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. Members, I think that we're, yes, we're good with that?
Madam Chair, the only suggestion I would have is some, you know, I think we've all met with the utilities to some degree or another, you know, outside of that meeting. Would it be helpful to maybe having like a working group or just a discussion as you do that? Or keeping us all in the loop of what you're doing that we can, it's kind of a moving document, you know, that it isn't just like presented, and here it is. Do you want to have a continued conversation somehow? I guess my question.
Perhaps, Ms. Teich, I know that generally you would keep us apprised of what's going on, and if there's any changes, we don't usually do a work group in this way, not to say that we couldn't, but what, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation would be to have an ongoing discussion with occasional updates. I could even do an update at a future county board meeting before that public hearing. The intent is to continue those discussions with the utility companies who've reached out.
Okay. And I think you're, you're hearing an interest and desire to give input into that process, so thank you. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. If you are interested in speaking on the proposed ordinance or any changes that you might suggest, you can come up now. I don't know if we've had anybody that specifically has signed up in an order otherwise. Okay, that, I'll just ask you to come up, make sure you say your name and your address, and then you can have two to three minutes to say whatever it is that you would like to, and hopefully you're hearing an interest in continuing the conversation to get, make sure we get this right. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dale Aukey, A-U-K-E-E, 12300 Elm Creek Boulevard, representing Great River Energy. Great River Energy is the, is the supplier, power supplier to the co-ops within Stearns County. We appreciate you reviewing the letter. We certainly do appreciate the, the proposed continuance of this public hearing. We have worked with other counties that have adopted this ordinance in the past. Even with that ordinance in place, we've been able to work out, I'd say, a compromise of, of where the utilities are located in relation to the road right-of-way, with the understanding that we're, we're both, we're both in the same business, the Highway Department and, and as a utility, to try to follow corridors that are existing, where we're minimizing the impacts on, on, on private landowners, but then also trying to allow the, the, the county and, or whatever the road authority may be to, I, I obviously have a safe, a safe highway, you know, clear of obstructions and so forth. So, but appreciate that. I'm not sure if any of our co-op members are going to speak, but I certainly open any questions that, that you may have.
Thank you. And we could get back to you with questions, too.
Thank you.
Are there other people wishing to speak?
Good morning. Just say your name and your address for the record, please. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Michelle Schmitz, and my address is 1192 Coakley Street, Paintsville, Minnesota. And I am here on behalf of Excel Energy. I'm the Community Relations Manager. I replaced Mark Ossendorf, who had been working with the company for 33 years, and retired in December. And I began in the role about five, five months ago, located at the St. Cloud Service Center. With me today are Tricia Duncan, and she is the Director of Community Relations for Minnesota, and Joseph Klein. He is our Design Manager. And, and we had submitted a letter. We believe this ordinance could have significant impacts, like was mentioned, on our operations in the community, and we appreciate that you are continuing the conversations. The letter that we had sent outlines four primary concerns. Reimbursement for relocation costs. We have got some clarification on the reimbursement process within our letter. Setback requirements for road crossings and the potential issues with the proposed setback requirements for the essential services. Impact on existing infrastructure. We have concerns that are addressed about the retroactive application of the ordinance, and then crowded public rights of ways, so the challenges that are related to that. So we really appreciate the fact that you are willing to continue the conversations on this matter. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none. Members, thank you. Thank you, both companies. Thank you for working with staff and working with us on this. We've had a recommendation to continue this public hearing, so I'm looking for a motion to do so.
Madam Chair, I'll move that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertram. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Natch. All right, seeing no discussion on the continuation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, it's adopted. Now, is there any, do you have any questions or anything that you want to give back at this point? I know everybody has been participating in conversations, so that might not be needed right now, but just in case.
Madam Chair, I guess I want to share, obviously, we've all learned a lot about this, and I live by the motto, if you keep doing what you're doing, you're going to keep getting what you're getting. Had we had this conversation maybe five years ago, we wouldn't have been shell-shocked by the $54,000 moving of the post by Excel on County Road 2. That's how it got to my attention, and I'm just thinking, there's got to be a better way. And in all the conversations and everything I've read that I've had, I think improving communications both ways are certainly in order, and that's good. I, I don't know that there's been a recent conversation with everybody on this issue recently. I know there's when road projects are done, but the bigger picture, and of course, in the short two years, or not quite two years I've been here, we do the Cottonwood Line that comes across Stearns County, and you know, a lot of controversy with that, and right-of-ways, and overhead wires that went over our right-of-ways, and we cooperate with that 100%. Townships, other things that I've seen. So the point, I guess, more than anything for me, is that we're serving the same people, whether it's Excel or the co-ops. It's our residents. They're in all of our districts. It's in the county. It's good for everybody, but it doesn't quite feel like that for, to me. It feels like it's kind of like you help us and we'll take it to you. And there's got to be open communication. If nothing else, I hope this process will improve that.
And I guess what I would say is thank you. Thank you all, because we haven't had a reason to be having this particular conversation. This has been a newer development, and us being able to, to work and move forward on issues where they make sense, and then there's a lot of areas that we don't have any authority over, or that our taxpayers are not going to be charged. So we just want to make sure that we're both working well and that we are also staying in our lane. This is very much in our lane.
Madam Chair, I could add one more thing. This ordinance was not meant, I, I know there were a couple of comments in the letters that we received. This ordinance is not meant to be retroactive and make the utility companies go out and move all of their lines that are outside of our right-of-way right now. The other thing, and I know this has been brought up by several of the companies that submitted comments, you know, we've talked about, there is always the opportunity to be within our right-of-way, and so there may be some options of things that we can do related to that. I know crowded rights-of-way is one of the concerns that they have. Again, I just wanted to stress that this is not meant to be retroactive and make everyone, so even if this ordinance would have passed as written today, we would continue to have those bills from the utility companies, and they would be large bills, and they will have certainly an impact on our road program on certain roads throughout the future, so.
As Commissioner Bertram said, if we're all working for the same people, let's try to figure out some good solutions on this one moving forward. Thank you. I look forward to the information in between, and are, do you have thoughts on when we would be continuing the public hearing?
In some of those discussions, I think it will be at least a month. I don't want to rush this, obviously, and I think there needs to be ongoing discussions. We've talked about you know, depending what those board agendas look like, and we would have to notice, but it would be at least a month, potentially a month and a half.
Okay. I was asking that in part so that people know that they're going to have time to continue to work on this, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benson?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. You have the three items that you pulled from the consent agenda. As a two-to-two tie indicates via our bylaws for the Planning Commission, the action then goes in front of the county board for decision-making. Typically, what happens is you hold, schedule a public hearing, and you hear that, any testimony, and then you go forward. I do have Angie Berg here with any of that information related to public hearing dates, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
And I know that Commissioner Persky would like to talk about that as well, so do you, do you mind just doing for the public a quick, just a very quick overview about what these requests are?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Angie Berg, Environmental Services. There are three 5-megawatt solar projects that the Planning Commission heard last week, and two of them are on the Meadow Brook Dairy Farm property. Two separate 5-megawatt projects, and one of them is on the Trout Family Partnership property, and that is also a 5-megawatt. All three of them are Brockway Township within a half mile to.
Thank you. And before you start talking about the public hearing, I know, Commissioner Persky, you asked to speak on that and on this project, these proposed projects.
Okay. Just a couple of things. First of all, we had only four members of the Planning Commission there at, at the meeting. However, just taking a look at the proposals and the ordinance that we have, these are permitted uses. And it's north of Sartell. Sartell is surrounded by Leesot Township, and they have a policy of prohibiting solar, whereas Brockway Township has solar available as, as, as a permitted use. The rationale for denying the permits was not really strongly substantiated for any real reason other than they didn't like it. The comments were, were made a little bit about that being, you know, unattractive, okay? Was on, you know, that eye is in the, the beauty is in the eye of the, the beholder, and that doesn't seem to be an issue of, considering the screening. Also, that, you know, that we would be eliminating development. Well, Well, Brockway Township was not in opposition, none of the neighbors were in opposition. The location for the two of the solar gardens are next to a gravel pit construction site, and the other one is an open ag area with, you know, several miles of distance between them and Sartell. And so, over the 35 years, again, if development was to take place, you know, development could take place. So we could go ahead and we could say, well, let's set our own public hearing and do it, and then hear from the concerned citizens or whatever, but nobody had any opposition to it. And it's a permitted use. I would really question the rationale about having a public hearing when it's permitted use and there's really no opposition. And there's, and I take a look at the things, I voted against solar in the past, and I voted in favor in solar past, but when I voted against the project, maybe there was environmental reasons for it, or there was opposition by the neighbors. In this case, there doesn't seem to be any real strong rationale why we should not be placing these solar gardens in there, because it is a permitted use. So, and within our ordinance, we can, we can go ahead, and we do not have to have a public hearing. The statute says that we are the, we take input as a body, we take the input from the Planning Commission as a recommendation, and not necessarily as a mandate of having to do one thing or the other, so.
So I think I'm hearing you propose that we approve the three, the F9, 10, and 11. Is that what you're?
Well, that would be my recommendation, however.
Right, but I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm saying that we could do that, but I would, you know, I would like to hear what the rationale on the, from the board, why it would be that we would want to have the public hearing and potentially deny it, because in my opinion, there was no substantiated reason to deny it, other than it was not liked.
So is, what you're saying is the two people that spoke against it were two Planning Commission members, not two people? Okay. Ms. Berg, before we go to board members, is there anything you want to say about the process?
Madam Chair, the only comment would be, as we always come to you with, typically the past practice, the board is to hold a public hearing if there is a tie vote, or if you don't agree with the Planning Commission's decision.
Right, right. Members?
Again, if we go with the historical, we would have the public hearing. Again, people could come, but maybe they won't. I guess, you know, Commissioner Persky probably has a point, because he was there, but if our past practice is to hold a public hearing, maybe we should be, what would you say, consistent?
Madam Chair, and I wouldn't be in opposition to that. What I'm just saying is that it's, I think it's superfluous to do so, because, again, there's no rationale there. Also, by statute, we do have it, that we can make those decisions, and getting into a past practice, then maybe we should change the ordinance if that's how we're going to be operating.
Ms. Bertram?
Well, one thing, Madam Chair, that I've learned in two years is that things aren't always as they seem, so it's always something, we usually don't do this.
Yes.
I'm getting, as you know, I get a little irritated when you say, well, we normally don't do this or that. So the consistency part, I don't care. We all know how this is going to go. We can do the public hearing. It's going to be four to one, you know, so the public, I will say this, I supported solar. I've heard, 16 years on the Planning Commission, I've heard all the solar applications, I think, missed a few of them there in between, but kept in touch with it, but my concerns, which if we have a public hearing, I'll save it for that, but if we don't have a public hearing, I guess I want to say it today, and then if we don't, but I really couldn't care less if we have a public hearing or not, because we know the way the vote's going to go, and it's probably just a practice of brutality, but I don't support the way this is happening in Stearns County. I don't. I hope we can encourage somehow the Planning Commission, solar. I hope we can encourage the Planning Commission members, because I've noticed a lot of four or five member attendance. We really need to work on that, I think, to make sure that there's, because it certainly helps, a little bit helps us to know the heavy lifting is being done, that's a separate issue. So the public hearing, I could go either way.
And I think all of us are concerned that there was four people there. So for me, it's not so much that we have a grand tradition, it's that we are looking for public input and also respecting the Planning Commission when they are close. The reason why we get the public input is so that we might hear something that we didn't know or understand, and that could impact, that has impacted my decisions. I mean, oftentimes, I also understand in this one that we probably do know how the votes are going to fall, and so from that standpoint, I do hesitate, though, that the Planning Commission members, when, you know, when they're split like this, they may think, okay, we're just going to not listen to others, but I agree in this case. So it feels a little like maybe we would be overdoing it?
And Madam Chair, I would agree, because if, you know, if all seven members were there, you know, it would have been obviously a different outcome besides two to two. I guess I was kind of disappointed, too, when I seen there was only four out of seven members there, and maybe that's a conversation at the next Planning Commission meeting, or somehow to address, you know, being accepting of those positions, you know, and granted, everybody, you know, there's reasons you end up missing, you know, for whatever, but it's, you know, nice if they can make 11 out of 12, or 12 out of 12, but, and I would concur with Commissioner Bertram, too. You know, when you have no opposition, yeah, it's probably just delaying the inevitable. So I don't know if you'd be looking for individual motions?
Looking for, yep, we need, I think we, no, we could do it as a group, I believe, right?
Madam Chair, Angie Berg, Environmental Services.
Do one separate ones.
So I think you could do it separately would be better for the record.
If they had been on the consent agenda, stayed on the consent agenda, they wouldn't have been done that way, which is why I was saying that.
Oh, sure.
I mean, they were, in my mind, they never should have been on the consent agenda. Once it was a split, it should have been just on, but, so we'll treat it as if it was on here, and we could take individual motions.
And Madam Chair, my only other comment would be, having, if it's going to be a vote to approve, it would be not, you're not going to say you're concurring with the Planning Commission.
No, we'll be approving the project, correct?
As with the conditions and the findings of fact.
All right.
As supported by the Planning Commission.
Okay. So looking.
Madam Chair, if we are going to move forward with perhaps approving these, Angie, is it possible to bring up?
We, if we're bringing up anybody, it's got to be turned to a public hearing. We don't have people come and speak.
No, no, I'm not going to have anybody speak.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Could we just bring up the visual of each one?
Oh, that's a great idea.
Madam Chair, I'm not fully prepared for that right now.
But Madam Chair, Commissioner Persky, if we're going to do this, why do we want to go through that?
We've got them in our packet. How about if we just remind members where they are in each packet? So F9, you can go ahead and click on, on the item, and you'll see the map there.
All right. Madam Chair, well, board members, if you want to have a public hearing, I mean, I I.
Sounds like we can go ahead and go to individual motions. So looking for a motion on F9. Do you want to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And F9, do you want to, do you want to say your comments now?
I'll wait, Madam Chair, until the third vote, after the third vote.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, all right. There's a motion, a second on F9. See no questions or comments. F9, it will be to approve with the conditions that are in there, approve the project with the conditions listed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, will you take the roll? Yep. Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Bertram?
No.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Okay. F10, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the project with the conditions as listed in our packet.
Second.
There's this motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion on this item. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
Commissioner Bertram?
Aye. I mean, no. I mean, no. I'm surprised by these votes here, so it's throwing me off.
I vote no.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
All right, F11. This is the one, this is the remaining one. This is submitted by Enterprise Energy on behalf of Meadowbrook Dairy Farm. Is there a motion to approve with the conditions listed in our packet?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Seeing no further discussion on this item, and we will have opportunities afterwards. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oops. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
I was saying oops, because I almost just went straight to roll call. Roll call, please. Commissioner Bertram?
No.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Notch?
Aye.
And Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved. Okay, anything up on this, these projects?
Yep, Madam Chair. Again, you've heard, we've heard this all, and you've heard it all from me. People aren't coming forward, or because they pretty much have given up the process on this whole solar thing. Again, we all know a lot about it, but sitting through 16 years of Planning Commission, sitting through all the applications, and I supported some of those, but you've heard me say this before, too much of a good thing is too much of a good thing. And many more than any other county, some of these townships have just been, including Paintsville, have been just hit with these projects, and as Commissioner Persky said, so Leesack doesn't allow them, and then they just infiltrate the next township. There's a reason townships, Paintsville, Zion, Lake Henry, Spring Hill, either have passed or are considering passing, because unfortunately, they're kind of dealing with it from the ground up. Normally, it's more of a regional planning thing, and Commissioner Persky, quite frankly, and most of those, agreed with me on a lot of those that we didn't, but there's a lot of unknowns, and the one thing I've seen purely is there's no, nobody that's coming forward to do these, that there aren't second and third agendas. You know, they figure out how to piece these projects in, they come in and pit one township against another, or city against a township, and everything, and they're all people that are there for one reason, not to create green energy, in my opinion, not to bring people together, and it's to make money. It's the federal-state, you know, it's all that kind of stuff, and that troubles me, because, you know, having been a fifth-generation farmer, I mean, my boys are going to, my wife asked me once, when I was, you know, working with Paintsville Township, to do that, and she said, really, why do you care? And I said, Marlene, 17, or whatever we have, I lose track, and I exaggerate, so I'm sorry, but whatever farms are in Paintsville Township, and now Paintsville's going to have two of them, I said, the boys will live with that forever. I may be dead, but clearly, a lot of the answers are not done, decommissioning and all that stuff, and you take these, one application after another after another, and in fact, several of them, over the years, they got the name drawn. I mean, all they do is take out the name of one township or area and put another one in, and several times, I said, well, we're not in Good Hugh County, and, you know, so they're all rubber stamped, and they're all, and again, it's.
So Commissioner Bertram, kind of wrap that up, because I was asking about these specific ones.
Well, all three of these, it's the same thing. I mean, it's the same.
But you've got a lot broader, and we could, we could get back into our long, long one, appreciate it.
But anyway, everybody knows the story.
And Paintsville Township does have the oratorium now.
There's a lot of people out there that do not support these, and they're not here, they've given up, they've been worn down, and are in process of approving the 1-megawatt application, all that stuff. I hear it, I think some of you hear it, but it is what it is, so that's why I'm voting no, until we get this better figured out, and until we get a majority, obviously, that want to figure it out, this is the way it's going to go.
Commissioner Notch?
I guess, in my years on this board and being on the initial, when we created the initial ordinance, I guess, I don't feel, I guess I haven't heard where people give up because they feel we're being dictatorial on this issue. I guess I don't feel that at all. Could we do some more tweaking? I think so. But as we know, 17% of Stearns County is in Excel's territory. Excel's trying to accommodate state mandates, which, you know, happen with other things besides solar, wind. I do have a proposal at some point, if we get into discussion, on maybe something that could put us all maybe a little more comfortable, and I don't know at what point I could bring that up, but I'm willing to do something for a compromise in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you. On this item, I ask Commissioner Persky, there were people, there was support for this project.
Well, yeah, there was support from the township, but there was no opposition. There were some people that voiced opposition, but it was more of the general blanket of, not from these projects, but the general idea of not to do solar, and but, but being a permitted use, that doesn't pertain to us doing that. You know, and I believe, you know, we, and I have, I've agreed with Commissioner Bertram many times about the issues of solar. I don't particularly like the way the state and the federal government has approached it, because just dumping money into projects and perpetuating it is maybe perpetuating it not for the, again, the green of the environment, but for the green of the dollar, and that is unfortunately the way many of these are happening, but so be it, and that's, and that's just the way it is, so I have a little trouble with that. However, again, if I see a project that's not in the best interest of the nearby community, if it's not in the best interest of the environment, or for any other particular reason, that, you know, it shouldn't be placed, by, you know, by all means, I will not support that solar garden, so.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm not wanting to keep this going much longer, I guess I'll just say, this particular project did have local support. I think there's, there's two items, just to set it for the public, since we got into a bit more of a discussion. One is, the projects that have come forward, the property owners wanted this. The property owners wanted to be doing this, in many cases, on ag land, where, on parts that they were not going to use to help diversify their income, and so that they're, it could be passing generationally. I have heard from many personally, talked to many of those owners, and so that ends up being, you know, part of this tug. And then lastly, I think maybe a work session, an agenda item, when we've got one at some point, could be this. We all should remember, the state is eliminating these small projects, and we are, this may be near the end of what we actually see. So, so members, we are going to move, Lee, stay on.
Madam Chair, just on that point, I'd really like to hear, Steve.
Well, we will in a different session. We were doing, we were doing this particular item, so I think we want to have everybody prepared. So while I appreciate, I always love talking, this isn't our coffee clutch, and I don't mean to be, sound disrespectful, but we need to go ahead, and if we're going to be having a presentation or a conversation, let's have it set up. And again, a question I would have, and I always like compromises, or how is, Lee, you talk about, how can we do something better, is how many are going to be left in the state, and what are we really, are we going to have any more really coming in front of this? So we can get to that at a different time. For the public, we're going to be taking a break, and then we're moving into closed session. Lee, you should stake around, because we have a human service item, so we have a closed session for the public to know and to discuss pending litigation. So we will be closing that, and then if there's action to be taken, we will reopen. So with that, we are in.
Madam Chair, just, do we want to do issues with the, now, or do we want to do them when we come back?
We'll do it when we come back.
Okay. All right, sometime. All right, sometime.
My favorite chiropractor joke is, you know how many chiropractors it takes to change the light bulb? One, but it takes 10 sessions to do it. The journey one is where the guy died, went to heaven, and Saint Peter was looking, and he said, "Oh, my God." He said, "You're 10 years old." "Oh, no," he said, "that's my billable hours."
All right, so I think we're back on. What we have left for today are issues by commissioners, which could be a fun joke one because our granddaughter told me a fun National Geographic marmot joke, but I don't remember it. So we could have to go, we'd have to go with yours, Jeff. All right, issues by Commissioner, Commissioner Lunsbyr.
No issues.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
All right, Commissioner Notch.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. So in my district, so far, we have five meetings. One last night in Bruton. We had very positive feedback, especially, you know, they all understood the sales tax portion. And then just for the public to know, in my district, they got holding for it yet, October 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and Sock Center on the 21st of October, from 5:00 to 7:00, both at their City Hall/Fire Hall combination. And then lastly, I mentioned this on CASM yesterday, I want to congratulate the Freeport Fire Department for getting the Greater St. Cloud Public Safety Foundation 2024 Department of the Year Award.
Right.
So congratulations to my fellow fire and rescue members. There's also a couple of, you know, different awards for St. Cloud PD. And so that'll be October 25th, so I'll be attending that.
Very fun. Excellent. Commissioner Bertram.
Couple of things, Madam Chair. City Pines will ask me, and Mike and I talked about it, about looking to approve a resolution that they approved, asking MPCA to correct and deal with petroleum spill that occurred many, many years ago. They're kind of trying to resurrect this and get some action taken. Mike's got copies of it, obviously. I assumed it was going to be on the agenda for us to discuss whether or not we would want to consider it, and it's not. So I guess what we're looking for is, if the board's open to talking about this at some point at the next meeting.
Dr. Williams, yeah, is there a timeline on it?
There isn't from their request.
They're trying to do something before they submit another, a request to the PCA, and I don't know what that date is.
So this is essentially like a letter of support, but in our case, it would be a resolution.
We could do it with either, I'm sure it would work, but...
Okay.
And they do have their own resolution that they shared with us, that he's got copies.
So do we, we need, we need to put that on the next meeting, or is that something we can...
I think that's what we would do.
That's what we normally do.
That's what you're looking for.
Okay, well, good.
So if we can do that.
Yeah, and I think if we just invite them to come and...
Yes.
I know very little about it. I think Commissioner Bertram knows quite a bit about it, but...
It certainly sounds like it falls within the kinds of, the kinds of things we would do if it's something in support of an action they're trying to do. Otherwise, we don't do it. It's not like some of these other things. We just, we don't do a whole lot of things with other people's grants or requests or anything else. And we probably need a longer conversation about that if we're going to start doing it, but this certainly seems like it fits.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a request from another governmental entity. I think you could argue either way, but I think it's worth considering anyway.
Okay, so we'll see that in our next packet, probably under consent, or do you want them to come and speak to it?
Why don't I see what they would want to do? Personally, I would like them to present it rather than me present it.
Then let's do that.
Because I don't have a full understanding of it.
Okay, let's, so you'll have a conversation and then, okay, sounds good.
And then we don't need to really talk about it, other than we're all aware of the airport situation, and I don't know if we should have a conversation at some point about that process and the detail for next year, even though it's delayed. I would think it would be in our best interest at some point, kind of have a conversation of how this works, especially, I'm naive to this because I wasn't here when it was created, and I don't know how we, do we just do that individually, or should we kind of have a board discussion on what, what's the process we'd like to see?
I was wondering if they were going to give an update since it's a multi-county entity.
Thank you.
Or what they're planning on doing. Because I was surprised about the request, frankly.
Yeah, I think everybody was surprised, and that's why...
That was not a part of the agreement.
That's why the, why the Regional Commission is withdrawing or rescinding that resolution that would have established that levy, because they got some feedback from administrators and commissioners and, and for the purpose, just as you're suggesting, Commissioner Bertram, so that they can have a communication with the boards. I'm not sure exactly how we'll do that, but I assume it'll be them coming in and having a discussion with you.
There you go.
And we'll schedule those as into the future.
And I do think, you know, we were pretty clear that the first 10 years, we're all supposed to continue to be the city of St. Cloud, and that we also said that if you're going to get into becoming a taxing authority, that there probably needs to be elected officials on there. We're not really great with having decisions being made by people that don't have any elected officials on their boards. So they would need to come and convince all of us.
That, that Airport Commission is established with the authority to, to, to do the levy, just as they did it actually, but they had enough feedback that they, they realized they need to have some communication with the boards and make sure everybody understands why they think they need it.
That is a little different than what we talked about. I mean, I thought I had read it carefully enough at the beginning, but we, we express concerns about there not being any elected officials and that it wasn't supposed to be for 10 years. And so it doesn't seem, it can't be 10 years because I haven't been on the board 10 years. I'm not like Steve, I haven't been on the board 10 years yet.
No, it's not been 10 years.
And to your point, though, Madam Chair, that's what I'd like to know is, from our perspective, what is the process?
Right.
How was this created? What is our expectation of the process? And then their report is separate from that. I kind of need to get caught up on...
Right, so you should probably meet with staff about that part.
Can we do that, Mike?
And then we should definitely be having them come in, and we may even want to have a, some type of a communication beforehand about that, so, because that is different than what we talked about.
And we can definitely give you the history, you know, long before we have the discussion.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. Our expectation was that before they started taxing, they would have elected officials on the board as well.
And Madam Chair, also just coming in post-levy, I would have liked to have seen it beforehand, at least. Not a surprise when we...
Yeah, no, they should not be, yeah. Otherwise, we're going to, all counties will be having conversations with their appointed members. Commissioner Bertram, sorry.
And just to have a clarification from what we're seeing here, I assume that's going to be during a board meeting. Okay. And then the last thing is, again, I don't want to get into details with this other than I've asked kind of hintily a couple of times, when we replace high level staff, I just think I would really ask respectfully that we have a conversation on a board level. I know this authority has been given and I don't know, I don't know the background of that either, when it was given, by what board it was given, what year it was given, but I really think that we should have a discussion about, do we want to continue that practice where we're totally hands off on high level hirings and everything? I have a different perspective on that, but rather than going on and on about it here, I don't think it's disrespectful or asking too much to have a board conversation of saying, do, should we look at this differently? Again, and before I can totally understand that that would be the thing to do, I don't know how it got here. So if we could have, and maybe we all want that, or maybe you guys know, it seemed, I think Steve said yesterday, you said that you weren't here when that happened.
When what happened?
When we gave the full authority.
When the administrator was hired, we have one employee.
The point is, it happened eight years ago or 10 years ago or whenever it happened, but I don't know what that is. And then should we continue?
Well, I think you might want to have again, a conversation and if you want me to participate in that, I will, but, but not a, we, we, counties with administrators have one employee. That's the administrator. That's, that's who our employee is now. Whether or not there's opportunities to have a member participate in some of these processes, that's a different issue. And that certainly is something that could be potentially more conversation. That is something we need to talk to Dr. Williams and maybe that might be more of a work session item, but you just need to remember, we are an administrator. That's what our county structure is. That's not a decision that somebody just gave. That's our structure. We have like almost all counties, we have one, we have one employee. That doesn't mean that there isn't an opportunity to participate and I've certainly thought about, I would like to do that too and don't even know how you'd pick who was involved then because you would not have more than one person. So anyways, it's something we could have more conversations, but for you, we are an administrative county and we have one employee.
And it's getting deeper in the weeds than what I thought we needed to get, but we can do that.
Yeah, but if you're going to throw it out, if you're throwing it out, then.
I'd like to have the conversation more in depth at a board level to discuss all that because I can tell you, I've talked to 50 counties and everybody does it differently. And again, I'm not even talking about being directly involved, but having a board member directly involved, but even just like, okay, this is what we're going to do. This is who the team's going to be to have just general conversations of helping get it to where it needs to be. So again, I'm not going to blaver it if we can at least have a discussion on it. And again, I don't think I'm asking too much to have that conversation.
I'm not sure what you're asking, so I'll follow up with you about what you're asking.
Me either.
I really don't know what you're asking because it sounded like something different, but I'm hearing it. Let's talk, let's talk, let's talk later on.
Well, I want the board to understand it. So I guess, again, we can kick the can down the road. It'll come up again and again. So if we need help, understanding it, then.
I would suggest you start with talking with Mike about, about what are, what are, what are structures like? And then if there's another conversation, but this is our structure. You might, this is our structure.
It has been.
No, 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 that actually we are a county administrator county.
In the conversation, part of it was when Mike was, Mr. Williams was hired, it was the policy then the chair and vice chair, I believe it was chair and vice chair were on the hiring committee.
For him, right.
For the administrator.
That's the one that we're on.
Yep.
That's the administrator. So when Mike eventually retires, which we won't let him, we will have a couple of people on that one. Now, that doesn't mean there aren't some other, and perhaps Dr. Williams, you can let us know if you, there's ways on these high level ones with the processes, if there's opportunities for engagement. I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't think personally, issues by commissioners and really.
Looking for, I think, and you know, there's a couple of formal actions that prior boards have taken that, that delegate, you know, that, that process to administration and to HR. But even having said that, since I've been here, when, when we've hired a high level person, at least once that I recall, we did involve some, some board member involvement. I can't really remember exactly how we did that, but we did. And, and I think the recent, you know, process for an assistant county administrator is what has Commissioner Bertram more interested in this as of late. And so, yeah, I'm happy to talk about that and it's, as Commissioner Bertram says, every county does it different and, and if we're going to enter into some kind of a practice like that, we would just want to make sure we do it right in according with how we govern.
Right.
Madam Chair.
But certainly, I mean, it's no problem if we're in the, as, as Commissioner Bertram suggested, to know about the process and kind of how it's going.
Knowing about the process is good, knowing where we're at in the process, if there's an opportunity to be engaged and whether we're rotating or what that looks like. And I do recall before I came on that you had a couple of times that they were high enough that somebody was, but I don't, we haven't had that until.
No.
I was just going to say, I would like to look at the process too. I mean, in working in Sartell, we had a personnel committee, which is just one person from the council and it could be one person from the board or you've used chair and vice chair, but we can, we can talk about it.
And again, cities, cities are different. We just have to remember that we are different than a city. Did you have anything?
Just a couple of things. First of all, elections, appreciate the folks that are stepping up to, to be volunteers at our election process and those election officials. And residents do have an opportunity across the county to vote now. If they'd like to vote now, they can vote at Lake George, I believe, during day hours, eight to four, and also at the West Side Service Center. If they want to take care of their voting now, and that's across the county. Is, is, that's correct, Dr. Williams? Yeah, so they have that opportunity. And then just earlier, talking about the planning commission, you know, the planning commission and the board of adjustment, you know, these are serious positions because these are life changing for these individuals that are bringing these proposals ahead. I was really disappointed with, you know, having only four people there at that last meeting. And, you know, perhaps there is something that we want to have as a standard requirement is, you know, that out of the 12 meetings that we, you know, they should have to be there at, let's say, 10 of the eight, 10 of the 12 or something like that with reasonable reasons for, for being absent because if, we do need to take these positions serious because these are, are top notch issues and I think we have an obligation to serve the folks. So just an opinion about it.
And do you buy laws for both of those? It's probably worth looking at those.
I don't know if we have attendance bylaws.
They do.
Yeah, you should look at the, right, I was going to say, look, and, and maybe there was something weird, but yes, that was disconcerting. And I'm guessing that there will be some follow up with people because you're right.
Yeah, and I think oftentimes when we're absent from committee meetings, we find a surrogate to come in and step in. And we, you know, we usually have an alternate, but sometimes when we don't, we ask people to come in just because we take this stuff serious.
Yeah, no, thank you. Okay, I just have a couple of items. One actually had to do with the elections. Yes, if you're at, in, want to be voting within St. Cloud, it's what the old pool house used to be at Lake George. There's City Parks offices in there now and it goes till 4:30. There are really good election people. They will help you out so you can get that done. So do remember you can do that. I know too, for those of you who vote by mail, I know my mom filled hers out over the weekend. Make sure you turn over the ballot. There's things on both sides across the county. We appreciate the importance of us taking seriously our, our civic responsibilities there. And then as far as additional presentations, there is going to be one at Whitney Senior Center tomorrow morning at 9:30. There will be one in White Park coming up and one in Sartell. And there are additional ones, as was mentioned earlier. So look on our website. One of the most important things for people to take away with this is we are asking, we've been given the opportunity for you all as voters to decide, will this project cost you less than it would if it went on the, on the property taxes? It's not like a school bond referendum or some others. The question is how we're asking you about how we should pay for this project. So please know that your vote is important and if you vote yes on the sales tax, it will cost you roughly 45 cents on the dollar on the tax side as opposed to 100 cents on the dollar. It's not on the project itself. And somebody earlier today was talking about wanting to make this very uncomfortable whenever we're asking. This is very uncomfortable. This is a lot of resources. It is things we're required and we ask for your support in this because it will cost you a lot less. And with that, we are done for the day.